... Our nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Will the city recorder please call roll?
Mayor Jacola?
Here.
Council President Steinhebel?
Here.
Counselor Dykstra?
Here.
Counselor Mann?
Here.
Counselor Savage?
Here.
Counselor Ufers?
Here.
Counselor Workman?
Here.
Thank you. The following consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be any separate discussions of these items unless a counselor so requests. In the case, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Agenda Lebanon City Council Agenda, December 13th, 2023. Board Minutes from the Planning Commission, October 18th, 2023. Council Meeting or Minutes, November 8th, 2023. Regular and executive session, and then November 17th, 2023 executive session, and Declaration of Arbor Day. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion's been made to approve. It's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Public comments. Citizens may address the council by filling out a comment card prior to speaking and handing it to the city recorder. Each citizen is allotted up to five minutes. The council may take additional two minutes to respond. The city recorder will accept and distribute written comment at the speaker's request. First up, just remember, five minutes. When it's green, you're good. When it goes to yellow, you have a minute left. And when it's red, wrap up the comments, please. First up is Adam Kirkpatrick.
Hi.
Please.
Hi, guys. Thanks for hearing me. I'm Adam Kirkpatrick. I'm a dentist here in town. And I noticed that there was, the question about water fluoridation was, you know, brought up to the council. And I just wanted to put my two cents in, since I'm a practicing dentist here. I've sent, you guys probably noticed the giant packet of information that you have access to. That's the humongous weight of science that supports how valuable water fluoridation can be for a community. And it's kind of funny, as a dentist, you know, my business would actually do better with poor oral health, but that's not why I do what I do. So I just wanted to speak on behalf of the, my patients and the people of the community in support of maintaining our current water fluoridation, which is clearly, by a giant margin of mountain of evidence, best practices for communities. So, I don't know, is there anything else I should say?
No, you have five minutes if there's more comment that you want to provide.
Well, I guess I'll leave one anecdote. When I went on a mission trip to the Dominican Republic a couple of years ago, I noticed that what looked like small cavities, you know, when I was doing fillings for these people, were giant caverns inside of their teeth, just huge, open sections. And as I got to reflecting on it, I think that water fluoridation has a huge component to deal with that. There's no water fluoridation in the Dominican Republic. And, and what I see as small cavities here are because of the fluoridation from our water supply gets incorporated into our teeth as our, as our teeth are forming. And it makes it more resistant to getting decay. And so, so, I mean, I saw firsthand what a huge difference it can make, just clinically speaking, so.
May I ask a question?
Of course.
Dr. Kirkpatrick, how many patients do you have in the Lebanon area?
It's a little hard to answer, since, you know, some people come more regularly than others, but I would be surprised if there were less than 2,000, maybe 3,000 people probably call me their dentist.
Okay, thank you.
And I just, I'd like to point out the, that water fluoridation is supported by the Centers of Disease Control, American Academy of Pediatric Physicians, American Dental Association. I mean, every major professional organization supports this. So I would encourage anybody who has any questions or concerns to, to look up the information that I provided, or it's really easy on the American Dental Association's website. And, you know, the, the main thing is sometimes people get worried about things that they don't understand. And so, as a practicing clinician, I would just like to say that there is, I think it's 70 years of clinical research on the safety of fluoride, and it's studied over and over and over again, intentionally because we do not want to cause harm to people. And it's really important that we don't do something that causes harm to be safe, so. Thanks for hearing me out, guys.
All righty, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up is Vanessa Huffnagle.
Surrounded. Okay, I'll go ahead and start. Hi, my name is Vanessa Huffnagle, and I am a second-year student at the College of Osteopathic Medicine here in Lebanon. I wanted to share my own perspective and the perspective of many of my peers on the homeless crisis that Lebanon is experiencing alongside the rest of the country. There are, there are a variety of clubs on campus that engage in some way with the homeless members of our community. For example, many of us volunteer at the Soup Kitchen. Another handful of us run medical screenings at St. Martin's. And even more of us volunteer with the Free East Lynn Clinic. Sure, volunteering looks good on an application, but that's not why all of us do it. We do it because we like forming connections with the people we meet in these settings. They're funny and charming, they're down-to-earth, and a conversation with them can make our day. It breaks my heart when people that are more fortunate look down on their homeless neighbors and don't see them as members in their own community. I get this hostile feeling towards our homeless neighbors in Lebanon more than I have in any other place I've lived in Oregon. I know this town can be kind and loving. At Cop Northwest, we see that within our first week when we're gifted medical bags from the community members that we lovingly call the Bag Ladies. I'm glad that we as students can help the people of Lebanon in so many different forms, but without any structure at all from the city government to support these people, our efforts fall short. What I've come here today to ask for is a change of heart. Please treat these people like people. This is an issue that can't be entirely fixed with city funding, but it helps tremendously to have our city's government support our most vulnerable population. I know there's been a lot of push for the city to open a warming shelter on the colder winter nights. And while I agree with that initiative, I think a warming shelter is just a baby step in the right direction. A more consistent, even permanent shelter maintained in part by the city would benefit the community far more. Every single person in this town deserves a warm place to sleep at night. They are as much of a member of this community as you are yourself. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Coming.
Vanessa was Ward Two. I didn't mention that, so. Okay, thank you. Next up, Corbin Tolan, Ward One.
All right. So I'm really glad we have a dentist in here today. That was actually what I was kind of hoping for on his testimony with that. Mentioning into the third-world country as far as tooth degradation and basically funneling all the focus that fluoride is the cause of, or lack of being, that's why they have tooth decay. Whereas if we have fluoride in our system and we're still seeing tooth decay, I mean, if you are getting it in an early stage of life, like we're talking about here, then technically speaking, there should be no cavities whatsoever. Whereas something else is causing cavities. And in a third-world country, there's tons of other variables into that. I went over the MSDS sheet from the last meeting, which, again, this MSDS sheet is made by experts. This is only four pages of data as far as it mentioning into the corrosive nature of that substance. And I would ask, if it is truly safe, especially for the dentist that is here, that is acting on as an expert, why wouldn't we not just go down to the water treatment facility and take a shot out of that hopper? I would invite anyone that is pro for that to prove to me if it is safe, if we can just get a four-ounce glass and take it right out of the hopper and just swish it in your mouth. I, I don't understand how this is a hard-to-see argument as far as it being bad for teeth. And if you can't just do a simple, easy case study on yourself to prove to the public that this is a safe substance, then I don't see how you can stand as it being pro. So this is why I'm still saying and advocating that this should go to the public vote in November of next year. And I would encourage city council to vote as far as giving the public the option on this, because that is one person's testimony as far as him looking at his data and thinking that this one substance is the case-all study for why tooth decay happens, instead of looking at things like maybe sugar, junk food, the lack of brushing. There's a lot of other areas to tooth decay than just the lack of an additive. So I want to make that point clear on that. And as far as the petition goes, that I mentioned last time, and it going over in circles in here as far as why it did not get completed, I started that petition. We focused our efforts on installing council members instead. That would actually bring up and represent the public comments that are being brought forward. And I am glad that we did that, because we are actually having council members that are listening to the public in doing this. So that's why the petition doesn't exist anymore. That's why I dropped it. We focused on going door-to-door, hanging bags for the, the council members, our mayor, who's doing a great job right now as far as listening to us. And that's my point. So I would encourage as well, again, go to your MSDS sheet from your experts, from your water treatment facility, and get some conclusions off of that. And again, if you really want to prove to me that it's safe, take a shot out of that hopper. And I encourage this dentist to do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert, I, I'm having, you're not going to speak? Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to presentation, Small Municipality Advocacy Coalition Membership. Man, that's a mouthful. Sean Tate.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Thank you for putting up with our, my technical difficulties. And I probably should have emailed the presentation some time ago.
Get close to the microphone, please.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, now I can.
Make sure you use the mic.
There we go. Did everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
All right, great. So my name is Sean Tate. A little bit about myself, and then I'll talk a little bit about how we got here this afternoon, or this evening. I live here in Lebanon. I'm a lobbyist by trade. I work in government relations. I'm going into year 10 now. I spent most of my time before that in the newspaper business and the marketing business for about 20, 25 years. I got my start in daily newspapers in Corvallis, and I ended up in Bend, of all places, and spent the last eight years of my newspaper career there. Ruined the newspaper business for everybody, and then decided I needed to do something different and ended up in politics and advocacy. I don't come to this with a degree in political science. I come to this with an interest in policy. I've had several conversations with a couple of you folks over the last few years. And those of you that know me know that I don't love politics. I like good outcomes for clients. What I'm going to talk about today is something that came to fruition starting almost a year ago. Many of you may have heard about Small Municipalities Advocacy Coalition. The way it got off the ground about 12 months ago, there was an article in the Albany Democrat Herald that had an interview with Scott McDowell, who's the city manager in Brownsville, and a few others. And they were discussing some of the challenges with getting their local priorities for advocacy, infrastructure, community concerns, things that they would want some state help on. We're having a hard time rising to the top, so to speak, of anybody's priority list. And so I reached out to Scott and others and said, we have
I'm sorry, we're going to have someone.
Sure.
We don't mind people talking outside, but it's getting a little loud.
It's a little distracting.
So, long story short, about five or six communities came together 12 months ago and started Small Municipalities Advocacy Coalition, okay? This is really the quote that got me interested in politics, and that's why most of you people are here now, anyway. That's Pericles, he's a Greek philosopher, statesman, warrior, all-around smart person. Just because you do not take an interest in politics doesn't mean politics doesn't take an interest in you, right? That's, that's a fact for every one of us. It's what kind of turned the corner for me, and that's why we're here. Forgive me. So a little bit about Oregon and its status as a rural state. This is kind of some information that I have picked up over the year of studying and thinking about how we're put together. 241 communities reported on a database of incorporated communities in the state of Oregon. 217 of them have populations of under 25,000. I think that's a significant point. Hundred and 185 less than 10,000. 162 fewer than 5,000, okay? If you take the top 10 most populous cities in the state and take them off the spreadsheet, the average community size in the state of Oregon is 5,890 people. We are a state of small communities, right? And our small communities get short shrift at the state level, because what drives the policy conversation is what? Population, okay? So that's why I know we're rural, and that's why I know this, this coalition, right? As it's being developed, will have strength. We share a lot of the same problems with the larger communities, right? We have infrastructure issues, we have housing issues, developable land issues, revenue issues, homelessness issues, addiction issues. Interesting fact about the homelessness and houselessness conversation. At the last legislative days in Salem, Senate Committee held a hearing on the homelessness popular, the crisis in Oregon, the overall crisis. They didn't invite a city to the table of smaller than 50,000 of population. So there's a tremendous voice out there that's not being asked to share what the story is. There's not a lot of grace for the differences that we have between us and larger municipalities, right? We have the same unfunded mandates, and we have fewer revenues to deal with them, right? We deal with agencies that offer the same heavy-handed enforcement tactics of the small communities as they do with some of the larger ones. And we don't have the same capacity to turn on a dime and spend money as larger municipalities. Very few policymakers outside of rural districts understand the rural economy, right? We are looked at as quaint places to visit when you're not in the city in the weekend, and we bring a lot more than that to the table. I don't have the numbers, but I could guess that the GDP, the gross domestic product of rural Oregon, would rival the gross domestic product of urban Oregon. Maybe if you, if you're dealing with two behemoths of Nike and Intel, you know, those might sway it. But the fact of the matter is, what rural Oregon brings to the table economically has a lot of power and isn't talked about as often as it should be. And then, of course, we have the advocacy challenges. Oregon's larger cities and their representatives, they drive the policy package conversations, because they squeak louder than the rest of us, right? That's, the old adage is still true. The squeaky wheel gets the oil, right? So SMAC, as we like to call this, and we prefer that to the mouthful of Small Municipalities Advocacy Coalition, right? We are a growing partnership of small communities mutually invested in being a strong voice for rural Oregon. That's probably the best way to describe it. Our approach is very different than what's traditionally done through the advocacy model today. The advocacy model today is that organizations of a like mind pool their money and resources together and hire as many lobbyists as they possibly can to go tell their story in Salem, right? And I'm a lobbyist, right? I've been hired to do just that, and that's fine and dandy. But over my almost 10 years in that building, there's a few things that I've recognized. And that is that, one of them is that they don't want me chasing them around the building. They'd rather hear from you, okay? I can be educated as a lobbyist of what your issues are, but I can't sit down with somebody and discuss a water treatment facility with somebody who needs to talk about how to fund and fix a water treatment facility, right? As an example. So this is how SMAC is, is going to work. Very important to note, this is not a PAC activity. We're not raising money to make donations. We're not playing in the money side of politics. What we're doing here is we're assembling small municipalities of a like mind who have the same issues, the same concerns, right? And then work together to move what we like, change what we don't like, and derail what we really don't like to the best of our ability, right? As a start, and then down the road a little bit, we start talking about working on our own policy packages and being proactive instead of reactive to what we're seeing the state put out. So it's a bunch of, it's a bunch of small municipalities that are bound together by an intergovernmental agreement, right? A fairly loose, but, you know, important binding thing that says, we're all in this together, right? We're all going to work together to promote what we like, to promote SMAC and to grow SMAC. You work with Tate Public Affairs, counselor. Get used to the word SMAC. Work with Tate Public Affairs and some of my colleagues for all of the training and support to help work with the team to discuss and identify local priorities, develop what I call legislative action teams, which is the group that you actually engage to do some of the, the conversation work up in Salem, some of the advocacy work. We provide policy analysis and strategy consultation, communications and collateral development. In other words, we're writing the letters, for the most part, with your input. We're not sending people home with homework. We're going to engage in strategic planning sessions. And I would certainly intend to be engaged at, at the city level, at every city that is a SMAC member. Anybody that's, that's on the team has access to lobbyists and some of my colleagues as well for additional information. This is what we're asking you for, right? I think this is the place where, where most people genuinely get concerned. How much work is this going to be? I can tell you this isn't going to be a ton of work. It doesn't take a lot of engagement from the council and from the city to make this effective, but it does take some, right? You're going to be asked to perhaps send an email to a policymaker on a topic that's important to us. Or sign a letter, right, as part of the coalition. Or have a phone call with a legislator. Or even if you're an expert in something important that needs to be discussed, have a conversation with the legislator and even testify, right? This works if we all participate. This doesn't work if we don't participate, right? The goal isn't to have me and my colleagues up lobbying for you. The objective is to have the community be the voice and be what's visible in the advocacy conversation instead of the lobbyists, right? And we're going to have some fun with it, right? One of the things I've noticed in my years over, up in Salem is that the most visible advocacy efforts, they all have something in common. They all wear a uniform, right? They all look the same. They all deliver the same message, right? And that's very, very important. But one of the things I think about is that there's a lot of negativity. This is kind of fun. This is something that you don't see up in Salem, right? We have the opportunity to, while we bring attention to what we're doing, have some fun with it, right? And I think that's, I think that's really important. That's part of the marketing behind SMAC is to not just be an organization that complains, but is an organization that's visible and proactive and, and knows that they're in this for the long game. We're going to have T-shirts, we're going to have buttons, we're going to have ways to communicate bills that we like and bills that we don't like. I kind of like the SMAC-backed idea. And I think legislators do too. Those are the types of things that they will remember when you see something like that on your desk in the morning, as opposed to just a couple of emails saying somebody likes the bill, right? That's where marketing starts to come into this. So success in this organization is not, not terribly difficult, but it does have a look to it. All of our member municipalities actively engaging in the process. So when we have opportunities for people to sign letters and, and sign on in support of or in opposition to, we do that. And we're visible in the conversations that we should be visible in. Well-informed and well-aligned advocacy partners. We can't do this in a vacuum, right? There are lots of organizations across the state that share like interests that, that should know who SMAC is and that we can partner with on, on certain projects and certain topics and, and policy areas as they come up. Strategic relationship development with policymakers. That's incredibly important, and it all points towards, I think, the last one, which is policymakers recognizing the resource of the small municipalities group. It doesn't happen, it's not, it's not unheard of, right? But it's not all that often that a policymaker from outside of a district that has an issue in a, or has an interest in an issue that you have, makes a phone call to somebody in an organization like this and says, what do you think of, what do you think of this idea? What do you think of this bill? We want to be the resource for people that have concerns about how policy will affect small municipalities throughout Oregon, okay? So we want them to call us, or you, right, as, as the resource. So we keep this as inexpensive as we possibly can, because we have a lot of, as I've mentioned, very small communities across the state of Oregon for whom participation at a higher level might be a barrier. Right now, our smallest community member is Sotoville at 330, a population of 330. And I think our largest is Harrisburg at just under 6,000, all right? So we have Harrisburg, Halsey, Brownsville, Sio, Sotoville, and Monroe are the, are the six that are on board right now. We have had meetings and conversations and presentations on up the San Yum Canyon, Sweet Home, at the Coast, Astoria. And I'm headed up into northeast Oregon next week for presentations. We don't want this to be a mid-Wilamette Valley organization, right? We want this to be a statewide organization. I want people to know that when we're talking, when we're talking SMAC, we're talking all four corners of the state, right? We need Lakeview, we need Justin, we need Astoria, and we need the south coast as well. We need all the corners of the state and then everything in between. Here's the strategic timeline. As you can see, we are right in the middle of, or the end, I should say, of education and training to get SMAC off the ground. The legislative session starts really end of January, early February. In a couple of weeks, we'll start to see what some of the bills are that are floating to the surface. The short session will likely have close to 400 individual pieces of legislation. That's not a, a ton by comparison to what happens in a, in a long session where you get about 3,000. But we will have enough in this short session for us to be able to, to coalesce around the ones that we want to support, coalesce around the ones that we want to defeat, and coalesce around some of the ideas that we want to move down the road and have further discussions with. We go into the short session, and that ends, I think, March 9th is constitutional signee die. I might be off by a day or two there. And then we're going to debrief and talk about how we did, right? How did we, did we do a good job sharing information, kind of figure out the, the kinks? A short session is a great time to start a coalition, right? It's only 35 days long, so there's lots of opportunity for us to, to go a little bit slower and get things right. And then we'll go back into, in probably May or June, starting to think about our own policy package for SMAC, right? We don't want to be just a defensive organization. We actually want to lift up policy priorities for small communities and elevate them and give them some attention, get them in front of land use and water committees, right? As, as just an example. And so that will take a lot of work and a lot of great conversations and help from you guys about the help that you need. What are the things that we need fixed? And what are the priorities that we need addressed? And then we can work on them on our own to run some offense. Here's, here's the next steps. We're working on branding, all the materials and the examples of the things that you saw that have the SMAC logo on them. We're working on all that collateral, presentation folders and things like that to introduce all of to introduce all of, all of the policymakers to our organization. Earned media, we got our first media inquiry last week from somebody that wants to do an interview and, and get the scoop on SMAC, and I'm excited about that. Our web presence is, is undergoing development, trying to keep a relatively small profile until we hit a critical mass of, of members, right? And then come out and say, we're here. So we're kind of keeping things at a, at a, at a lower tone for a little while. Communications materials, like I've mentioned. Information and structure, how we share information, things like that. How we, how we move thoughts and ideas and conclusions back and forth. And then of course coalition development. I mentioned my travels. Many of our other members have traveled the state themselves and dropped in on several communities and said you should think about joining SMAC. So I'm following up with all of those people as well. We're very excited about this. It's fun to get something off the ground. I wrote my, my entire business plan based on the idea that rural Oregon doesn't get the representation that it needs. I don't work in Portland. I used to work in southern Oregon and that just wasn't rural enough. So here I am, here we are. We're going to get SMAC off the ground and be a big force in a couple of years. And we'd like the city of Lebanon to be a part of it. And that's the next, that's just me. And I'm very happy and honored to have had the chance to come talk to you guys tonight. Is there any questions, concerns, anything anybody wants to talk about?
Hey Sean, can you talk about the difference between your organization and like the League of Oregon Cities, which of course, you know, I think all of us are members of?
The biggest difference, the biggest difference is the advocacy model itself, right? Whereas the League of Oregon Cities, which is a, a very good organization, I have many good friends that work for the league, right? But they hire a dozen lobbyists to go out and do the work for their community members, right? And what happens when that happens is the communities with the bigger influence and the bigger voice get the attention, right? And we're not going to do that. We're not going to have 10 Shons running around the building talking about small municipalities. We're going to engage the small municipalities in the conversation at Salem, right? That's the biggest difference. We're going to focus specifically on rural and frontier communities and their needs. And that's important because the league doesn't really have a rural specialist. Make sense?
That makes, that makes sense. My understanding is we just crossed into 20,000 based on a Portland state population study. So where does that put us? We just crossed, my understanding is we crossed into 20,000 in terms of population. So how long do we get to say we're rural?
Well, you're still rural. I mean, the federal rural definition, I think, is under, is under 40,000 for a rural centaur. You're rural for a while. It's really, I think that while rural is an important word in this discussion, it's more about communities that face the same problems, right? A, a, a city of 50,000 in the middle of the state might have the same issues as a city of 10,000 in, in the mid Willamette Valley, right? Now, when we said what's a small municipality, well, we had to kind of draw a line. And the question that I asked the original six members was, well, what's a big city to you? Where do you start to see the resources starting to move away from you and go other places? And that line was somewhere between 20 and 30,000 population, right? So, and we think that's very fair from the, from point of view of rural. You know, above that, you have a different tax base and, and revenue opportunities than we do when we're small.
All right, thank you. Just thought I'd ask.
So we're the, we'd be the giant in this.
Be the giant, the first giant.
Can we get a discount for that?
Oh yeah, you bet. It's built in. Be the first giant, but I don't think you'd be the last.
How do you see it specifically benefiting Lebanon? Like I, I see a lot of those communities that are signed up, they're very small towns. Specifically, could you give like some examples that we would be helping Lebanon that we could take to the capital?
Well, I wouldn't know, I, I appreciate your question, but I wouldn't know the answer to that until I've had a conversation with all of you about what the strategic needs are that need to be addressed. I can tell you that one of the communities that's, it's in my organization has a population of 1,600 and is sitting on $20 million in just road repairs, right? So that's something that's of importance to them. That may not be the same issue that, that you have. But the, the point being, we're going to take those things to Salem on our own rather than hoping that a large organization picks up on the need and talks about it once or twice. I think that's the ultimate benefit to Lebanon is that we're going to do this on our own as opposed to hoping somebody does it for us. Make sense?
Any other questions or comments? Wayne, you have anything?
No, it sounds really good to me.
All righty.
Thank you, Wayne.
All right, if, if there's no other questions or comments, thank you, Sean.
Yeah, thanks. You bet.
We'll move into the first public hearing, well, and the only public hearing. Development code amendment to address RV parks and RVs as caretaker dwellings. Be presented by Kelly Hart, our community development director, and we'll be deciding if we're going to approve or deny ordinance bill 2023-21 or ordinance, and ordinance number 3016. Public hearing is now open at 6:36. You know, this is one where the city officers wish to declare ex parte contact conflict or bias. Is there anyone in the audience that objects to the notice that was sent in this case or to the jurisdiction of this body to hear or consider this case? Well, Kelly, present your report.
Okay. Good evening, council. Before you tonight is a two-pronged code amendment related to two city council directions provided to staff this year. The first one was approached by a member of the public late last year. We did a discussion item in February to talk about caretaker dwellings and whether or not recreational vehicles should be used for that purpose for certain businesses and during certain circumstances. And it was council's direction to prepare a ordinance to adopt a code amendment to allow for that type of use for mini storage facilities when it is all open storage and it's not associated with an actual construction of buildings. The second one is a code cleanup item regarding recreational vehicle parks. As you recall, back in I believe October of this year, we brought back a clarification conversation based off of an initial discussion that happened in 2018 regarding whether the city permits or does not permit recreational vehicle parks in the city. Based off of that conversation, it was council's direction to bring back a code cleanup item to make sure that it is clarified that commercial recreational vehicle parks are not authorized. And so that is what is before you tonight. If you could go in a little bit of detail. For the caretaker dwelling, we did identify when recreational vehicles are allowed to be utilized, and that is when it is for mini warehouse where there's no permanent primary use or structure, that they need to be able to connect to sewer and water on site. And that it is a permit process, but it is a temporary permit that is assigned to the actual recreational vehicle and it is assigned on a yearly basis. So that is taking the direction from council, implementing it in a code, and that is what is before you tonight. So unless you want me to go into any further detail, I can conclude my report and answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, would anybody like to speak regarding this matter? Public hearing is hereby closed at 6:39. All further discussions will be limited to council and staff at this time. Well, the city, oh, council discussion, sorry. Is there any, any discussion on this matter? I think we've talked about this.
Thanks for your work on this.
Yeah, good job, Kelly.
Okay, will the city attorney please read the title of the ordinance? My, my computer went like into updates right, right now. I can't even look at anything. That's why I was looking at this stuff.
To the rescue.
Because I usually sit there and go through, thank you so much.
We got it now. Ordinance bill number 2023-21, ordinance number 3016, a bill for an ordinance made in the city of Lebanon Development Code regarding RV parks and RVs as caretaker dwellings.
Can't hear you, Trey.
I read the ordinance.
I read the ordinance.
Thank you.
I, I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's, a motion's been made to approve. It's been second in all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll go into regular session. Thank you for this, by the way. The mushroom update. Because I already screwed up the other word.
Psilocybin.
I know, I just, I get tongue tied.
Okay. So this is just a quick follow-up from our original work session that we did also in October. Through that initial discussion, there was a number of questions that were asked that we obviously needed to do some additional research on and decided to bring it back to you. And then there was also a request for us to provide a, a map of if the state regulations were to come into play, what are the exclusion areas and where are the areas that are authorized? And so for a quick recap on the questions, in the staff report, we did provide you with the question and the answers. But just a quick recap for the public. Question number one is what does 200 milligrams of psilocybin annihilate look like? In doing some research, the annihilate is the actual drug portion of it that creates the psychedelic effects. There's about 10 milligrams of that within every mushroom. You start doing all the math, we came up with about, it's, you know, a five by five by one area or 10 gallon jugs by 10 gallon jugs of milk is the area that is equated to how much can be on premises at a time. In terms of the dosing that is authorized within the, the state law, you can do a maximum of 50 milligrams of dosing per session. And in the session process, you can ask for a second dose while you're in the process, but at no point in time can you go over 50 milligrams. We provided the hours in which these sessions must be based off of the, based off of the milligram dosing. And it's a maximum of 35 to 50 milligrams equates to a six-hour session, and it goes below that. I believe the average dosing is between five to 10 milligrams, and that is about a two-hour session window. We also took a look at the cost of these services. I personally was shocked at the costs that are, that are being provided for these. But looking at four of the eight permitted facilities that are under operation, you're looking at an average cost per session of between $1,000 to $3,000. These costs are, A, the cost of the actual product, which is set by the manufacturer, and then you add a 15% tax allocation onto that. And then you also have the service center costs that are associated with the independent contractors that are the facilitators, and then the service center room rentals and fees and everything like that. So this is definitely something that is, is costly per session. The next question was in terms of the, the tax allocation, who gets the money? Does any of that come down to the city? The basic answer is no. It all goes to the administration of the permitting program to the state. So the state remits the full 15% of the tax value. In terms of use eligibility, the state is just simply, simply clear, 21 years of age or over. The service centers do go through a screening process where they, as part of the, the introduction, they do an analysis, they ask questions, and they determine whether or not the service is appropriate for the individual or not. As to how that is done, that is at the service center level, and who they choose to turn away versus not, that's also determined at the service level. At the state regulation, it is just a simple 21 years of age and over, and you don't need a medical prescription or referral for it. The question was also asked in terms of state regulations for clients, if they violate the requirements with the safe transportation plan and, and their safety plan. There's nothing in state regulations that specifically says if a violation of those requirements occurs by the client, then they can't come back for a period of time. That is set at the service center level. So it's a private business enterprise decision. It is in their best interest to make sure that if violations occur and it is problematic, that they take care of that because it would affect their licensing requirements. In terms of city permitting, the question was asked about whether or not it would be similar to what we do for OLCC licenses for alcohol permits. Short answer is it can be. Right now, what we do is somebody wants to have an alcohol permit, comes into city hall, several departments review it and identify compliance requirements for it, and then it comes to a recommendation for the city council. We could do that same permitting process, or we can also do a different type of permitting process, and I can go a little bit further in the time, place, and manner how we would propose doing the land use process for it. And then finally, measurement of intoxication. I, I put an adorable little emoji guy to say, we don't quite know. Talking with the police department, there, there's no intoxication level as there is with alcohol. There's no blood alcohol level that, that can be measured. It is a food product. And so you're basically going off of if a person is exhibiting certain types of behaviors. But it's not easily identified that you can look at somebody that's exhibiting certain types of behaviors and be able to determine their own psilocybin versus a different type of intoxicant. I did include in the staff report that per the ORS, there is general language of when somebody would be subject to a DUI, and it is generally speaking, they're exhibiting certain attributes to demonstrate that they're intoxicated, and that is the police department having to evaluate that level of intoxication and their ability to appropriately, you know, operate a vehicle, basically. So it's not easy for us to say you can leave facility versus you can't. It's based off of whether or not they're acting like a traditional person that's not under the influence, basically. So that was the list of questions that, based off of us reviewing the, the meeting, we were able to compile. I can open it up for any further questions or comments on these before moving over to the next conversation on the time, place, and manner, if you would like. If anybody has any further questions?
That price thing shocked me.
Yeah.
That can't be real.
I think just move on.
Just keep going?
Yes.
So the question was asked about where these facilities would be permitted under state regulations. We have a, a better map that's able to be zoomed on online and, and in your packets, but generally speaking, as we kind of discussed in the meeting, you're looking mostly on the highway and then in our industrial zones. And we included the buffers around the, the state regulations of where you can't be. This map does not include and go down all the way to the specifics regarding, you know, specific areas that are already cannabis uses or restaurant uses. We didn't want to do that because that's a current point in time versus six months from now, if that business closes, then that location would open up. We really went more on the, the wide scale of, of the general areas that it could be possible. So this is the maximum extent of the areas that would be authorized under the state code. What we ended up doing is proposing some time, place, and manner restrictions, which I will go through. And, and the map looks very similar with one major modification. But what the city is proposing as its current framework for time, place, and manner ordinances, if the voter referral were to pass allowing psilocybin to occur, we would maintain all the state exclusion areas. Propose to add an additional 1,000-foot buffer area from commercial childcare facilities such as the Kinder Care or the Boys and Girls Club. And then also include a thousand-foot buffer between different psilocybin facilities. Several other cities have also implemented that buffer, so we wouldn't be the first one to do that. And then beyond that, we would identify specific zones that would be permissible, which would be limited to the highway commercial and in the industrial zone. And it would be prohibited for residential mixed use and also the central And so what you'll mostly see is the area for the downtown is largely impacted by the Boys and Girls Club anyway. But it would also exclude the, the downtown zone is what would be proposed. So again, furthering just, it would be highway commercial along the highway or in industrial areas if those sites were available for operation, so.
When you, when you talk about When you when you talk about facilities, is that all the all the three different ones? It was manufacturing, the lab, and then where you can use? Is that what you mean by facilities, all three of those or just?
Two out of the three. Laboratories are not subject to the separation requirements or the buffers. And so those would be permitted in any place in which we currently permit laboratories.
But the manufacturing.
But manufacturing facilities and service center facilities would be included in these exclusion area zones.
Okay, any any other, any questions?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Move on to the third item, recreational trail grant agreement. Whitlatch, who 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 is our?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. So back in October of 2022, we applied for a recreational trails grant to extend a trail on, I will call it the west side of River Park. It's kind of a loop trail back there on a piece of property that we bought from the city of Albany. We were successful in that grant. You can see the total project cost that we're estimating. We are getting $158,943 from Oregon Parks and Recreation. We've also budgeted this year in this year's budget, 116,000 from Parks SDCs. And then Build Lebanon Trails is donating $22,300 for this. I can answer any questions, but basically the recommendation is to allow me to sign on to the grant. And we'll move forward with that this spring and build another trail segment within the city. So I can answer any questions.
Is there any questions?
It would suggest that all the trails need to be marked with for recreation purposes only.
Thank you.
Given a ingenious lawsuit that was rendered by the Court of Appeals of Oregon.
Wow.
All be darned.
Seemed like something you should have to do.
Can't be for business.
Have I discussed that with you guys? Oh, yeah, they, sorry, I will. It's, I mean, it's appropriate time.
Absolutely.
The Oregon Court of Appeals found in a case that a the city could be liable without with no immunity for, what is it called, the recreational immunity?
Yes.
There's a doctrine of recreational immunity for like parks and and things that are used for recreation. And a lady got injured while she was walking on a city trail going to the beach. And the she sued the city when she was injured and the city alleged recreational immunity. And the the Court of Appeals ultimately held that there was no proof that she was recreating while she was using the trail because she was using it to get from point A to point B. And that's not necessarily recreation. So my recommendation is that all of our city trails be marked for recreational purposes, otherwise stay off.
It's insane.
Lawyers. Any any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I saw move.
Second.
Motion been made to approve. It's been seconded all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to the American Rescue Plan Action Funds. Presented by Brendan.
Long time no see, Brendan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Before you is a memo discussing the American Rescue Plan Act funds. The city of Lebanon received $3,475,676 that could be spent on a variety of items specific to either premium pays or water sewer broadband infrastructure, lost revenue and a couple other items as defined by the the act itself. At this time, the city has allocated $3 million of those funds to be spent on the West Side Interceptor project. Those funds, I believe, are darn near spent in their entirety as of this fiscal year. You have spent $75,000 on just a little bit and $130,000 on retention bonuses to employees, leaving a total balance to allocate of $270,272. The one thing, the one caveat to that number is that while doing some reporting recently, the city discovered that the retention bonuses that were issued don't fit within the guidelines of the the ARPA Act or of the American Rescue Plan Act. Specifically, we believe that the the funds allocated originally were based under an idea that that you could provide funds to government employees as retention bonuses. But you have to specifically identify that without those funds, they were ready to go somewhere else. And I, we don't have that documentation in place. And I don't know that we could really justify that every one of our employees was ready to jump ship. As a result, there is the line in which you can provide premium pay. We do believe that all of those bonuses that were issued would fall under that provision, except for some that exceed 150% of the state's average wage threshold. That would be about 12 people that received bonuses using ARPA funds that we would need to use other funding sources for. The total dollar amount for that was just about $16,000, which would increase your unspent allocation of ARPA money to $286,141. What we're hoping to do tonight is get some direction from the council on how you would like to spend that 286,000. We have provided a couple of options down below. And actually, just kind of toward the start of this meeting, I was informed that one of the options includes utilizing that fund, those funds for the sewer system. And apparently, we've had some issues with some influent well pumps. You might be inclined to ask me what those are, and I'm going to tell you, I don't know. But something at the wastewater treatment plant, and Jason certainly could could kind of expand on that if you had specific questions, that need to be replaced as of, well, today. And that costs about $200,000. So with that information, we think that certainly that is a good use of these resources to enhance the wastewater treatment plan and replace those pumps. But certainly you have some other options. Recently, the state or the feds allowed for those funds to be used for street systems of some kind, which we have highlighted would be useful, but also may not go very far, given how much it costs to do any sort of street projects. You're limited then after that to any water sewer broadband infrastructure improvements. Or we could discuss some other options if the council so desired. But we are looking for a direction on how to allocate those monies so that by the time we get to December 31, 2024, we have those locked in, allocated and ready to spend in in compliance with the existing rules. And I can answer any questions you might have.
They have to be committed by the end of next year?
Correct. They have to be committed, encumbered, yeah.
Okay. Can Jason tell us what those pumps are?
I can, I can tell you, there are, it's our influent pumps on our wet well for the West Side Interceptor.
Okay.
So it sounds like they had some major issues with them. So they're going to get replaced regardless, which we would have to take that out of another capital program. Or we can take it out of this. And then the remaining balance, obviously, we could use towards sewer lines.
What would the cost for replacing those be?
I believe we're looking at about 200,000. Yeah. We had one fail today, so rebuild on them is about 40,000, but they're. I don't even.
They're problematic already.
Want to venture a guess at the age of them at this point, so.
Okay.
Probably best to just put new pumps in that and make sure that we can pump into the headworks.
That sounds like a more pressing issue than.
Would agree.
Than spending it on enough, because I know the cost of roads nowadays and you could probably do my driveway with that money.
It'd be close.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think spinning on the sewer is probably the most important thing we can do right now.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay.
Is there any other questions? Sounds like there's a motion about to be made. Is there a motion? Move to approve? Prove for the. For the.
For the sewer system.
The lawyer's about to say something, so I'll shut up.
Well, I think you don't have to. But I think there's two motions, so if you wanted to separate them, right? To approve the previous 75,000.
Yeah.
For cybersecurity.
So.
Record of that, and then also a motion to allocate the remainder for the the sewer project.
So segueing off of that, the the 75,000 for the cybersecurity, we found in past council minutes where the council had discussed that as part of a, as part of a city manager's report, but no actual formal action was taken. And so we're we're kind of dotting some i's and crossing t's here on that one. But would like for the council to to authorize 75,000 of the ARPA dollars that we received to go towards cybersecurity improvements.
Okay, then I'll I'll make a motion to allocate $75,000 of the ARPA funds towards cybersecurity improvements.
Second.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made to designate 75,000 to the cybersecurity improvements. It's been seconded all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Sorry, Wayne, I keep, you're.
Yes.
I keep. All opposed? The motion passes. So the remainder of that that ARPA funds. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to take the unallocated ARPA funds towards sewer infrastructure.
Second.
Motion's been made to take the remaining balance and put it towards the sewer pumps. It's been seconded all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Keep stepping on him. I thought we. Motion passes. Okay, we'll get to the next one. This is a big one. Fluoride municipal water supply presented by Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. So during the November 8th council meeting, fluoride was discussed. I'm sure everybody remembers that. And after much discussion, a motion was made for the issue to bring back to council as an agenda item to vote on whether to refer it to the voters. Before you are three different things you could do. I would assume that there's other things that you can do, but we laid out three different motions that you could discuss and go through. We're happy to answer any questions about the motions or whatever you've got there. But we thought this would be a good segue for a discussion for City Council.
Any questions?
Just, could you break down the, I guess, the first two, put it on a ballot? Could you just break down for everyone the difference in those two motions?
So so the first one, basically motion to authorize the city manager to place the item on the November ballot. Remove fluor- to remove fluoride from surface water treatment process. Basically, we would do it then, or you could do it in a special election in a May ballot if you wanted to. That was number two. And three is do nothing. I think there should have probably been a fourth one here, which is the city council can make a decision to do either or. And that's essentially doing nothing at this point would be, hey, we're going to keep fluoride in the system unless they gather enough signatures to put it to a ballot. So that's that's the other option. Or the city council could say, we are going to remove fluoride from the city's water treatment. At which point citizens could gather signatures to have it put on the ballot and.
That's worked well for him so far.
Yes. So those are your options, unless there's something else out there burning tray. I don't think I'm missing anything there.
Oh, I think you've covered it.
Yeah.
I think you've covered it.
Thank you.
Then the question is, is there a motion?
I'm, I move for the first option to put it on the November ballot.
Motion's been made to put it place.
I would second that.
Authorize the city manager to place it on the November ballot. It's been seconded all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Michelle and I discussed it via eye contact.
So after the motion's been made, we we can have discussion before a vote. So is anybody want to continue to discuss this?
Feel like we've discussed it.
That's what I felt too, but.
I do feel like we've discussed it. There is an act, again, I'm going to stress, there is an act of petition open. The one we heard from one of the petitioners tonight, the other two are Lindsay Pearson and Sabrina Mann. And they have until May 4th, or May 17, 2024 to collect 1,952 signatures. So that I received that information from our our clerk, thank you, or city recorder, thank you for sending that to me. Just going to reiterate that we do have that, that that is available and out there.
Okay. But the motion's been made and it's been seconded, so we are going to vote on it. So you have something to?
Not going to stop you from voting on it. My my question was, last time when this came up, we did do an estimate on what it costs the city. Is it, is it not cost anything during a November election? Or does it still cost the city? There is a cost to the city by by referring something and having it placed on the ballot. Or is it just if we put something into the voter's pamphlet? Trying to remember. Just because it does have a financial impact, I figured we better at least reference that.
I don't have those numbers.
I know, and I didn't bring that up before, and I apologize. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I was, I was just thinking that there, the last time we talked about that, we did have, we did place a number at least on the financial cost of putting it on the ballot. So anyways, with that, I would just say there will be a financial impact. I don't think it's huge, but you should recognize that there is, there is a cost to doing that, if I remember correctly.
Thank you. The so the motion's been made to authorize the city manager to place the item on a November ballot to remove fluoride from the surface water treatment process. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion, all opposed? Uh, no. Vote is for two. Motion passes. Okay. Move on to property acquisition at 1185 Airport Road, presented by our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I was before you, I believe, in November. We have an option to purchase a home at the corner of Airport and 12th Street, which kind of lines up with our 2018 transportation system plan for a signalization of that intersection at some point in the future. Again, we don't know when that will happen, but my guess is sooner rather than later, based on development inquiries that we keep getting and traffic volumes that are happening. So with that, we got a market analysis from Gilat Home Team. They did a very thorough analysis. That came back between 316 to 336,000. We offered 324,000 for it. They countered at 329. We countered again at 327,000 and that was accepted by the seller. So with that, we're recommending that we purchase this property in preparation for a future signalization project. And that's on the motion for tonight, and I would be the one signing the documents for this. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Ron, do you have any idea what the cost of dis- demolishing that building? I'm assuming that's what you're going to do or move it?
It's probably in no condition to move. My guess is we're looking at probably 30, 40,000, Jason, somewhere in that neighborhood to to demo it. By the time we go through all the testing that's required and whatnot, that's that's probably the cost to that. Again, that would be paid out of the transportation system fund based on it's allocated as a project cost. So.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have even a glimmering of an of a timeline for when we might need to have that gone?
Well, so that that there's a couple of things that we can look at there. I think from a staff perspective, we would look at it and probably want to do it sooner rather than later. Just get it down, fence the property off so that there's no liability issues for the city, somebody getting hurt on there, there's a septic system on it. So that would be our recommendation. I suppose another route we could go is try and hire a property management firm that we could rent it for a while. But that leads into a host of other issues, you know, now you're out.
Yeah, because that 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 house just got completely gutted and rebuilt.
Yes.
It's brand new, basically.
Yes. Yes. So that's kind of where we're at with it. But as, as far as a timeline, I, I couldn't tell you. It could happen tomorrow. I mean, things come through the door, and we've had a lot of unexpected things come through the door lately, and then it may be ten years from now. I, I, I just don't have a good timeline for you, just based on what we're seeing, though, with development inquiries and if you start looking at traffic patterns, my guess is sooner rather than later.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure this is algebra instead of math. If we didn't buy it now and then we went to do this project down the road, what would be the cost, how, what would be the process even of acquiring that?
Be similar to grandpa, or to the county, what they're going through?
You, you would, you would hope that you could negotiate a price. If you couldn't negotiate a price, then there's always council authorization to go through the condemnation process. But I think with somebody living there, I think that's a, that's a really tough pill to swallow. I think we've got an opportunity. That's why we jumped on it right now. Normally, in a normal situation, we wouldn't go out and buy property for a project that we don't know when it's going to happen, but since it's vacant, you're not having to deal with those issues at a later date.
Yeah.
And we don't know what the cost is going to do. We don't know what the market's going to do, so.
It's too bad, too bad they went through all that rebuild and all that stuff.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty superficial.
They couldn't have put it on the market as is.
Yeah.
You could have got it better, and it would have felt better to tear it down.
Yeah.
Can you refresh my memory on the funding? It's not general fund, it's.
No. No, it's, it's Transportation System Fund.
Okay.
From the system development charge. Yep.
Got it. That's what they're for.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion or comments, questions? I guess we'll move to if there's a motion.
I would move to approve the sale. Purchase.
Second.
Motion's been made to purchase. It's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Next item, letter of support for INTEC, again, by our city manager, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. So INTEC had submitted a letter to the city, actually to the mayor specifically. We thought we'd bring it before the city council tonight. Basically, it is a letter of support. Reading through the letter that they sent and doing basically very little research on my own, it appears that the EPA is in rulemaking mode again and is basically going to potentially make some rules that would be very unbeneficial to INTEC and how they operate. So they're asking for the city's support. Basically, a letter signing on and what it's going to do to them, and, and they are a very important employer in town, and we just thought we'd bring it before council and make sure that you guys were okay with the mayor signing on to this letter.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And if we can do anything else, I'm, I'm good with that, too.
Move to approve.
Yeah, having attended the, having attended the, sorry, I guess there's a motion, second, but. Having attended the meeting at the library, I mean, it was pretty clear.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why it's.
I, I would agree. I, and I toured the facility, went through the, the, the brief that they, after they did their study on INTEC and, and I think the rule changes would be detrimental to their operation big time.
Yeah, completely.
So I, you know, the motion's been made to approve the signature. It's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Sorry, Wayne, you're, you're on a delay. I know, I got you.
Can I ask one question?
Step on him, can't you?
I don't, I don't necessarily understand the permit process for their discharge, Ron. Making sure you were looking at me. When, when it says in there, when we're signing a letter that says they are in full compliance with its permit, is that something that we independently have confirmed? I believe it to be true. Just if we're making a representation like that, I want to make sure that we can confirm that that's true.
Well, they, they talked about it in their briefing.
Yeah, no, I heard that, but I mean, it was, it seemed like they were saying it's under Lebanon's permit, so I was thinking that Lebanon would have the information. We would know whether they were in compliance with their permit.
With the air quality permit? No, Lebanon doesn't have an air quality permit.
Okay, but no, they're talking about, aren't they talking about the water?
No, this is, this is.
No, it's right here.
No, the Toxic Substance Control Act. That's right. It's in the first paragraph, maybe part of the first sentence.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yes, so, yes, we, we do, we do have a industrial discharge permit with INTEC.
Okay.
And yes, they do meet permit limits that are set forth in there, yes.
That's all of that, making sure that we can independently confirm that.
I was confused on what you were asking.
So the motion was made, it was seconded, it was voted, it passed six-zero. So move on to the next item, city manager's report. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to go through the report unless you've got questions on it. Just going to give you a couple of updates. Water update, we're making good water still. We're, I think our NTU level today was averaged about one-seventy-something, so it really climbed back up. So we're, we're struggling with that at the plant, but we are continuing to meet all the parameters in there, so. I don't know if everybody knew this, but we cleaned out our sedimentation basins this last week. Typically, we would get six inches or so of sediment over the course of a year. We had roughly, what was it, three feet, Jason, in there in the last forty to fifty days? So that's what we're filtering out of the raw water that's coming down the South San Am, so. It's definitely doing its number on our plant, I'm sure, but we continue to meet water quality standards, and biggest thing we're chasing right now is chlorine, and that's hard because you've got such a peaks and valleys in what the turbidity is doing in the river. So you're trying to chase that with chlorine, so, but the guys out there are doing a fantastic job, so. And they're keeping us up to date constantly, and if they see anything coming, why, they're letting us know, and we're staying on top of it. The other thing that came up was the potential to lease a billboard. Mayor, I don't know if you want to discuss that a little bit, or what your thoughts are on that?
Yeah, there, there's a billboard right outside of town on, on twenty. It's right by the storage units out there. It was Smita's billboard, and I was contacted in, their contract's going to be up for the billboard in January, and they were wondering if, they, they were kind of seeing if we wanted first dibs on it for tourism, for community promotion, that kind of stuff to use the billboard. I think it's what, seven hundred?
Yeah, I believe it was, that's what they, they talked about, was seven hundred a month.
You know, there's been a lot of people in the community that's, it's brought these type of subjects up. I think it would be beneficial for Lebanon, but, you know, I also want to hear what, what the council has to think about it, so. If, you know, we'd have to get with the community development and, and other, or other aspects of city government to see exactly what we want to pin on there, but it was brought to me, give us first dibs on it. You know, I'd love to hear what you had to think about it, so.
Would this be something best done in conjunction with the chamber, with their tourism folks?
Possibly, yeah.
Could be.
Yeah.
What, what?
What the money's, their tourism money's for.
What it looks like, I have no idea. I'll be totally honest. I just know that we have this opportunity, and it might be an opportunity that we should, we should really seriously think about.
Not talking about what goes on there, but the, the cost of it. That's why they have tourism dollars.
Yeah, I, my guess is this had come out of the city's tourism, not necessarily the chamber, which we do have adequate funding in what we collect from the tourism side as well, to do something like that. I don't have any of the details about who puts the billboard up, who changes it out, or, excuse me, any of those details. We could definitely dig into that and, and see what we can come up with there.
I got no billboard experience. Would you just put city stuff on it, or could you, I don't, sublet it to actual other businesses that wanted to? How's that work?
Uh, you know, Trey, could we sublet it to other businesses? I, I don't, it would assume.
I don't even know if that's the right word.
I don't know what their agreement looks like.
Probably, but I wouldn't recommend it.
Yeah. Yeah, we, I think we'd want to be careful doing that, yeah, you know, representing one thing or another. I think the mayor's idea was, was we'd use it for tourism, something promoting Lebanon with that big billboard out there. Say that to me again.
Well, I was going to say, I, I think it's worth exploring, and as long as we have a well-thought-out targeted message that actually has a hope of generating tourism, I, I would hate to just have a billboard that said, "Visit downtown Lebanon," when they're like three minutes from downtown Lebanon, because they're going to drive right through it. So as long as we could come up with something like, it was thoughtful and we thought this would actually generate business for downtown, I'd.
Well, and I, like I said, this is the very genesis of this idea, so I think we can reach out to those parties and get different, different ideas on, on how we would utilize that, the billboard. You know, like I said, how that looks, I have no idea, but I know there's plenty of people in the community that have great ideas and, and for promotion of Lebanon.
You don't want my ideas there. I just want to know how it's going.
I'll look at, I'll look at Michelle then. So it's just something to think about. Really, I guess, really, if you have a, a strong opinion on it, yea or nay, or just kind of, I don't know, just your thoughts on it.
Nothing's too dangerous that can't be talked about.
Yeah, exactly, so.
So, so let me, let me talk to Rebecca at the chamber, and let's, let's see if she's got some ideas. I don't know how soon we'd have to jump on this. It looks like their contract's up in January of twenty-twenty-four, so I don't know if they're going to be looking to fill that, if we'd have to jump on it, you know, before then.
I gather they already know that the person's not going to renew whoever has it now.
Yes, that's the person that's not going to renew, reached out to the mayor and, and basically brought that forward to him.
Is this going to be?
Details on that, and as well as if, if she's got some ideas on how we could use that for tourism or promoting Lebanon somehow, and, and maybe get back to you in January.
Ron?
That, that's not too late, yes.
Would this be a lease kind of thing? We would have it be financially committing to like a year or two years, or what it, what?
I, I, from what I'm reading right here, and it's just from the person that's currently leasing it, it's seven hundred dollars a month, and I'm assuming that it's a one-year lease, but I don't have that information. Yeah. I would think that you would want to change it out. After a year, you've probably hit your target. But again, I don't have any details on that. We'd have to dig into that. I'm not even sure who, who the leasing person is. Yeah, I have no idea. So this was more of just, uh, do you guys want to pursue this? And if so, we'll start digging into it as staff, and hopefully we can, you know, obviously, if we have to know by January one of twenty-twenty-four, we're probably not going to catch that, because I would feel a little uncomfortable about not having all the details and coming back and saying, hey, guess what I did? So.
You can afford it.
Yeah, I bought a billboard. And we're going to put the mayor's face up on it.
Oh, yeah.
Is it Lebanon?
With a strawberry.
Yeah, there you go.
The strawberry.
Old Mr. Larter.
You don't want me to be creative either. The only other thing I've got, is there any other questions on that?
No.
We'll dig into it and see what we can do there. The only thing I, I've got is holiday closures, city halls closed that. Remember the dates, the Friday before Christmas, the Monday.
Twenty-second to twenty-fifth.
Yes, and then also the first of January, so I will be around the whole time. I don't know if anybody else will, so.
I will.
If you need anything.
We're doing cable the day after Christmas.
That's it, unless there's any other questions.
All righty, any items from council?
I have one thing.
Yes.
I had read, and I brought this up actually to Ron, a New York Times story about how the city of Portland has looking, is looking to seek to ban public drug use, and part of that is that they're kind of hoping that the state legislature in January will take this back up and make some tweaks to measure, or some rules, and make some changes to one-ten essentially, to kind of give municipalities some, some options. So I know Portland, it looked like Portland had passed these ordinances, I want to say in September, in anticipation. Obviously, they don't go into, to play unless the legislature moves, but it might be something, I would, I would really like to, to explore that here, if it's something that Portland's doing. It kind of signals to me that maybe this is also something some of the smaller cities can do to kind of combat it. And what my understand, I, I'm only based on what I read, okay? So what my understanding is, by banning the public drug use, there's like a six-month, well, it's, you know, it's jail time, so that's interesting conversation to have, but I, you know, if it's a problem, which we know measure one-ten isn't operating as, as well as I think many voters had anticipated it would, this is an, an avenue to have a solution.
Yeah, we, we actually talked about this in our staff meeting today. From what I've read, Portland was going to go out with their ordinances, but the governor said basically, until the state legislature's done their thing in short session, then there's really not much that they can do in this.
They invoke supremacy clause.
Yes, so we'll, we'll monitor that, and if there are ordinances that need to be in place to.
Pave the pathway if this happens. I would love that.
We, we will be on top of that. We're a hundred percent behind that, so. But until the legislature speaks, and which I, based on what we're seeing, they're, they're going to do something this, this round. I mean, I think their, their hand has been forced, so we'll see what comes of that, and we'll stay on top of it and be ready to go when, when, and if they do something.
Perfect. That's basically my request, is there, if we continue to monitor it, and if there is an avenue, let's, let's take that path, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other items from council? Public or press comments? Gomal, are you getting up to give comments? Okay. Wasn't sure if you're just walking out or not.
First, I'd like to say happy, happy holidays to you all, and thank you for the time and energy that you all put into sitting here, and whether you all agree or we all agree with you, you do put the energy and the time, and we thank you for that. Secondly, Mayor, thank you for bringing that up, the, regarding the billboard. That's exactly what our town needs in terms of tourism. During the tourism brainstorming session, that was one of the small things that, that came up, because the city really doesn't do much in terms of marketing, promoting itself, any advertising. And Council Savage, you mentioned, three minutes from town, actually, a call of action is what we're lacking. Stop and shop, stop and eat, stop, you have Mr. Franklin here, stop and visit the train. When we have a museum, stop and visit our museum, and the idea is to actually change the billboard several times throughout the year. When it's strawberry time, letting folks know that's going to happen. A collage of things that are happening. We have some of the best trails in the area, you know, our, our Asian gardens, you know, these things that people that are driving by don't know, and if that can help, folks stop and shop, not just downtown, but we got the rest of Lebanon. So the idea is to implement that, and the Tourism Council, the Tourism Committee is just perfect to, to kind of work that out. We anticipate, it's just the conversation's been happening for about the six, six or seven or eight months, and it's about eight, maybe nine thousand dollars per year, and this is probably a really good place for us to spend some of our tourism funds for the entire town.
You know, I didn't see you back there, but when we were having the discussion, I thought, you know, Gomal would probably have some good ideas. We, we should, we should talk about this with him.
Yeah, well, when we had the brainstorming session, at the end of the session, that, that itself was one of the ones that was one of the simplest things. You know, we talked about marketing and, and some of the magazines that go throughout the state, and even television ads. We all see the television ads telling us, you know, "Visit a town, visit a, a community." We don't do that. We don't spend funds there, and, and this is, I knew that this was coming. Well, when I talked to them back in six or seven months ago, they weren't giving up that billboard, and they decided that it was time for them to give it up, and what I hope is that if we can work something out with the owner of that billboard, that it's even less, you know, but, or, you know, they might want to charge us more. Another conversation is, is that maybe working with some of the folks that own some land along that twenty might want to work with us on that as well.
All righty.
So, thank you again. Have a great evening, everybody.
Hey, thank you, Gomal. Is there any other public or press comments?
I don't want to take up too much time. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things about the options that were available to the. about the options that were available to the board or the council, sorry, I'm in school.
Can you speak into the microphone a little bit better?
Of course, this is better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Much.
What?
I said much better.
Oh, great. I aim to please, Wayne. But the options available to the council on the fluoride question, that was one, vote in November, two, vote in spring, in a special election. Was that the difference? Just to make sure I was characterizing that right. And then third, do nothing was that, or is it like, do nothing as in leave it to the council to decide? Is that a fair characterization as well?
So the do nothing would be to, if there wouldn't have been a motion here, then do nothing is the option, right?
Okay. I just know you sort of mentioned, oh, maybe there should have been a fourth.
So do nothing is essentially leaving fluoride in.
Not changing the practices.
What was Ron was referring to, is I think at one point you said there might have been a fourth option.
Yes, you could have had a fourth option, where the council could, they could vote to remove it right now.
Okay.
As this body, they could.
I just wanted to make sure I got that all. Sorry, appreciate that.
You bet.
Thank you. Any other, please?
Hi, I'm Nancy Randall, the director for Sandy excursions. I'm just giving, I'm going to piggyback on the tourism that was brought up, and Rick Franklin was sitting there knee and me as I was sitting there. So I'm just giving you guys an update. We're right in the middle of our holiday season, and I think it's pertinent. We're sitting right in the building where we brought about eleven hundred people in last weekend. We've been running since the twenty-sixth of November, twenty-fifth of November, and our season is a hundred percent sold out. And so our phone is ringing dozens, and I think we had like forty-eight phone calls yesterday asking for tickets for rides. We have eleven rides this weekend. We start tomorrow. We're kind of, we're doing a very unique bizarre ride where we're going to sit here for four hours. And I know the Downtown Association is helping promote that, the Chamber is helping promote that. Friday, we've got a nice elegant dinner. Then Saturday, we run rides all day. Sunday, we run rides all day, and we're partnering with De La's Blue Angels this weekend. There are longtime volunteers on the train to help us run this. They help spread awareness for their cause. And so we're having a fantastic season, but I think the biggest thing to point out is that whenever we're running these rides, we're successfully bringing in thousands of people through this building, and they're coming, like we said a few months ago when we were giving a report from Portland to Redmond to the coast, to sometimes even in Idaho, and people are coming to see the train and then spending time here in Lebanon. So it's a great season. Just wanted to update you guys on that.
Thank you so much.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Is there any thought of expanding it? I mean, it's sold out. Do you add more cars, or I assume that's how that goes, right?
What, do you want them to add boxcars?
He's getting out of his seat. We actually just added a car last weekend so that we could expand, because we can fit a couple hundred people on every ride. And so, yes, we're finding nooks and crannies to add more rides. I added a ride last Monday that was sold out by Thursday. So it's, the demand is so high. I put out, I had a ride today. I added ten tickets, and it sold in about ten minutes. So it's so, it's beyond what we can almost handle right now.
This is Rick Franklin.
This is Rick Franklin. Yes.
He's asking his wife.
So to answer your question.
I got my question answered.
This facility that you're sitting in is our depot. This is where the thousands and thousands of people come through here to get on our train and to get off our train. So we were hampered with the amount of space that we have. We've outgrown the space that we have now. We've asked that the council find someone else, somewhere else to go other than the train depot and to have the meetings.
You don't want to just build us a bigger council chamber?
We, you just have to understand, we're bringing thousands and thousands of people in this community, more than anybody else in this whole city does, and we're doing it year-round. So we need to support these guys when they come in here with parking. They go downtown, they have dinner, they're in town. They bring a lot, we bring a lot of people in here.
Yeah.
I want you to consider that. I've talked to the mayor about it, and he's probably talked to you about it. We need to make a change here.
We would invite you guys, too, to come see. It's a production that takes a lot of hands, and we put them on, take them out for an hour, and we have thirty minutes to turn the train around and put another almost two hundred people on board, and we do that all day, all weekend long. And so it's something I invite you guys to come see, and they come right through this very room and come talk to Santa Claus right afterwards, so.
So I want to share one number with you. Of all the people that we haul on our trains on the Christmas season, forty percent of all the people we put on those trains are kids. This is a kid's season. This is, Christmas is for kids. Forty percent of the people are kids. Okay, that's all.
One more question, and how much do you charge veterans?
Free.
Free.
Well, they are. Yep. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any other public or press comments? Okay, next scheduled council meeting be, oh, did you have, I'm sorry.
Just really quick, I wanted to just sincerely thank you guys for doing what you do. I know it takes a lot of time and effort to hear everybody's opinions about everything, and you have to make a lot of decisions. So even though it's not what I preferred for you guys to decide in voting, I just, I want to say that I really appreciate what you do. It's a great service, so thanks, keep up.
Thank you so much. Any others? I looked down too soon. Next scheduled council meeting be January tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, regular session at six P M. Just want to wish everybody happy holidays, and we are going to adjourn. We'll reconvene in executive session in fifteen minutes, so regular sessions adjourned.
Merry Christmas.